We're going to call this meeting of the City Council to order and start with a roll call, please.
Mayor Weiss.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Feller.
Here.
Councilmember Klein.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
If you would rise with me and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to have Carrie Dale come forward.
Good evening, and I'm going to be introducing Ron Ludke, who is our chief plant operator at the Mission Basin groundwater purification facility.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to introduce Carlos Wardell. He is a board member with the Southwest Membrane Operators Association.
Thank you very much, Ron. So just to give you a little information, the Southwest Membrane Operators Association is there to train the water treatment plant operators. That's our entire modus operandi. So every year, we give away an award for the best plant of the year. So what we do is we ask for applications across all the plants within California, Nevada, and all our other state territories. And with that, we get all sorts of applications. And in this case, we were actually able to review them all and determine that the Mission Basin Desalter was the small plant of the year. I want you to understand that this is not an easy war to win. It takes a lot of effort, and we at SWMoA understand how much effort goes into running these water treatment plants. It's not just a single effort with just the operations group. Obviously, Ron and his team have done a great job at making sure the water treatment plant operates the way that it does. But it also requires all the support of the management above him, as well as the board here, in order to approve all these upgrades to the plants and making sure that it runs properly. So with that, we'd like to present this to Ron. Oh, sorry. Mr. Weiss, to you. Now, we're going to Carrie.
At this point, I'd like to invite Emerald with the chamber to come up with our business spotlight.
On behalf of the Oceanside Chamber, I'd like to call up Haley Wansley of Intesa Communications to be recognized as our Member of the Month for August. Haley graduated with honors from the University of California, Santa Cruz, and studied at the University of Melbourne, Australia. She's also a graduate of CSU San Marcos Leadership North County Program and the San Diego Regional Chamber of Commerce's Lead Impact Program. She's earned a credential from the California State Association of Counties for Excellence and Senior Leadership for county government. And she's also been named one of Vista Chamber's 40 Under 40 Best and Brightest, and was recognized in the San Diego Business Journal's Next 40 Top Business Leaders Under 40. Before joining Intesa, Haley spent six years serving as the Director of Community Affairs for County Supervisor Bill Horn. And during her time there, she coordinated and guided the comprehensive economic development strategy for the North County region, and administered $2.7 million in grant programs each year. Today, Haley manages Intesa's North County projects and serves a variety of their government relations and community outreach clients. She's a board member of both the Oceanside Chamber of Commerce and KOC-T. Haley also chairs our Chamber's Young Professionals Committee, where she assists our staff in engaging, informing, and connecting young professionals of Oceanside and the surrounding cities. We thank Haley for her support and dedication to serving our community. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you for the award, and thank you to the City Council for the award as well. I'm really optimistic about Oceanside's future, and I'm just proud to be a part of it.
Mr. Mullen?
Thank you. I'll go ahead and give the closed session report. The council met to discuss items two and three on the closed session agenda. There was no meeting on item one. Item two, public employee appointment involving the city manager. Item three, conference with legal counsel on existing litigation in the matter of Zenly versus City of Oceanside. And item three B, conference with legal counsel on anticipated litigation in the matter of one case involving the Jones Road sewer. The council did meet on items two, three, and four. There is no action reportable under the Brown Act at this time.
Thank you. At this time, we'll go to our consent calendar, which are items five through 30. Do we have any public?
We have item number 24 and item number 25 pulled by the public.
It's 24 and 25?
All right. For item number 24, Walter Brown.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Walter Brown. I live at 1434 Temple Heights Drive here in Oceanside. I've been an Oceanside resident for about 36 years, and I've had an aircraft at the Oceanside Airport for about 19 years. I represent the Oceanside Airport Association. We wish to let you know that we are pleased with the resurfacing of the taxiways and runway contract that is up for your consideration this evening. We suggest that you do approve it, and are in agreement with the staff report. We hope that this activity is just the precursor for other improvements to the airport, and look for an increased vigor from staff and airport ventures to improve our airport. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's vote on that item and the balance of the consent counter. Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes, asking to pull items 12 and 27, move approval for balance.
I'll second that motion. We have a motion and a second to approve the balance.
Approved, 5-0.
Let's go to item 12, please. Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you. This item is titled "Approval of Amendment 1 to the Purchase and Sale Agreement with Shara Crockett, Inc., Doing Business as Pacific Group for the Sale of City-Owned Vacant Land Declared a Surplus Located on the North Side of Vista Way Between Lyle Street and Northway for the Purchase Price of $580,000," and authorization for the city manager to execute the amendment. The reason why I pulled this is this is land that the city took eminent domain on when the city was wanting to widen Vista Way. There were several homes that were there that were part of the Costa Serena community. And so that was a while ago. Recently, the Costa Serena community had been talking to the city and reaching out to me as well about turning this sliver of land, which is right off Vista Way and pretty much a part of Costa Serena, as a park. They don't have a clubhouse, they have no common areas except for the medians, and that's it. There's not very much at all for Costa Serena. And many of the residents there at Costa Serena walk on Vista Way and walk along Vista Way and use this as pretty much because of the high-traffic area there. They use it as a buffer and also to enjoy it. They use it to walk their dogs and part of their enjoyment of their community. The city was approached, unsolicited approach, to buy this sliver of land for residential, which of course means that it will no longer be available to the Costa Serena community. And I am opposing the sale because I do feel very strongly that we have very few, very little green space out there, and that we ought to have, in fact, moved on the request to make this a small park for not just the Costa Serena community, but there are other neighborhoods there as well. So I pull this so that I can vote no. Thank you.
I do not second that. My concern is if this was something that was a concern to a council member, it would have been brought up long before this as an item and not toward the tail end when all of these items have been negotiated. So I just, I move for approval of this item.
Can I do a...
Do we have a second to that?
One second.
Can I do a point of order? This was the first time that this was actually before the public. Everything else was in closed session. So this was the first time that I was able to voice my no vote. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second.
Four to one. Sanchez, no.
Item 25, please.
Under item number 25, we have one speaker, Roger Lane.
Hello, council. Thank you for listening to me today. I'm here to represent HPS Mechanical Incorporated. I'm Estimator and Project Manager for that company. I'm here to ask the council to consider the award of the sewer lift station, number three, project to the second bidder. We were the low bidder on the project, and they called our bid non-responsive. We believe it was not responsive. There's a couple of minor clerical errors. They don't total more than $1,000 that happened. We admit that in the heat of the battle. Some numbers just didn't get posted exactly right. But it's a over $50,000 savings to go with us as the low bidder, and we think the job should go to us. Basically, that's what I'm here to speak of tonight. That's basically it. And we would like the council to consider that our errors were minor, and in fact, we deserve to be awarded the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Staff, would you like to respond to that, please?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, City Council. Staff evaluated bids, and although there were a clerical error, we did follow procedure. The contractor had the ability to notify us of those clerical errors within five business days. HPS did not notify us. In turn, I sent a letter to the contractor, as well as emailed them. And at that point, they called me and asked what the error was with the bid. We informed them at that time of the mathematical error. In addition to that error, one of the requirements of the project is to do a concrete lining of the wet well for the sewer lift station. That requires, we have three approved manufacturers for that liner, and that is a sole, those liners have to be installed by approved installers. And HPS was not an approved installer and did not list a subcontractor on their bid to install that material. And so for this reason, we have recommended going with the second low bidder. If we did go with HPS, we would be setting ourselves up for the second low bidder to then protest that award as well. And part of this award needs, or the project needs to be installed fairly soon. There's construction limitations with harbor days and avoiding the summer months. So we have a very constricted timeline to complete this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you. I did get a chance to speak with staff about this and the discrepancies and, you know, was this a de minimis kind of a situation? And I understand, my understanding is not de minimis, also that if we were to go out to bid again, it would delay the project by one year. And that would be, and this is kind of a time is of the essence project. So I apologize very much to the HPS Plumbing, who were the lowest bid. But I have to agree with staff that it was because of the errors, it was non-responsive. And the most expeditious thing to do, and we have to be very responsible here, is to go ahead and support staff's recommendations. So I'm going to go ahead and move that we approve staff's recommendation.
Second.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Feller? We have a motion and a second.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Item 27, Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you. Well, this is a really good item, and it's a really feel-good item for the citizens of Oceanside. This item is to adopt a resolution accepting grant funds in the amount of $7.84 million. Let me say that again, $7.84 million from the state of California, the Natural Resources Agency, to construct our beachfront improvements project. This is going to save us pretty much the $8 million that we had decided to set aside from Measure X funds to build something that was, you know, extremely critical, and that is the beachfront improvements, the bathrooms sorely. I mean, I think it's been years that we've really needed to do something about that. So I want to thank our Assemblywoman, Tasha, for moving so quickly on this. Within five months, she got this from taking office, she got this for us, and it's a record. We really haven't gotten any funds from the state included in the budget, separate from, say, applying for grants. This is such a wonderful, wonderful project. So I want to thank staff also. She was looking for shovel-ready projects, and our city manager responded quickly to her request. That's why we were able to, you know, qualify. And we're going to start when?
Now.
Now. So move adoption. Thank you.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Feller?
When did we apply for this grant?
Deputy Mayor Feller, Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, we really didn't apply. It was essentially an earmark, but we were contacted probably about three months ago.
Thank you.
Councilmember Klein?
Less than five months.
I just want to take a chance to thank staff as well. I think that was the one difference in us getting that money was the due diligence of staff, having the project ready, being in constant communication with our local leaders and those relationships, and it's going to, this is going to be fantastic for the city. So thank you again.
Yeah, she did reach out to me, and then I reached out to Michelle really quickly, so.
Is there anything you'd like to add, Mr. Curtis, to this issue? No? Okay. We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Yes. Hallelujah, right?
Motion approved, 5-0.
Yay!
We go to item 31, please, which is adoption of resolution regarding Wanda Thurston. Uh-oh. Uh-oh. I guess not.
I think he's coming down.
I guess we'll wait. How many did you have on 33? I mean, 34.
We currently have five speakers.
Let's do it.
First speaker is Ken Layton, to be followed by Maryori Contreras, to be followed by Cindy Rocco. We are on 34.
Mayor Weiss and councilmembers, Ken Layton, 1221 St. Helene Court. The last time I spoke was at that special afternoon July meeting. At that time, I referred to the city clerk as Zack. Knowing Zeb for some 25 years, I must now apologize to Zeb. It was a senior moment, two Z names. Again, my apologies. The point of that speech was to implore either the city clerk or the mayor to encourage every speaker to identify what neighborhood they live in when they speak up here. It used to be that the council leadership was hard and fast on asking speakers to identify their address. It's gotten real loosey-goosey, and now people from Vista or San Diego or wherever are free to get up and speak on Oceanside issues just as if they live here. But sometimes, they don't. Please make it a point going forward to encourage speakers to identify their neighborhood, to ensure that these meetings aren't opportunities for out-of-town actors with no skin in the game who are getting paid to support a certain developer or cause. This is now crucial because one council member committed in writing that he could deliver 50 people from his district to get up and speak in support of a certain development. Congratulations. But with all due respect, just to make sure we're in fact not getting scammed, please, going forward, encourage speakers to identify the Oceanside neighborhood they live in. Other journalists I've spoke to have told me they would absolutely like to know where the council speakers are from so as to better cover how business is being conducted in this fine city. Please note that just as he was leaving his office in Oceanside, the previous city clerk, Zack Beck, was attempting to bring Oceanside up to the standard now being employed by many other cities. They use a kiosk up front at council meetings so that everyone who wishes to speak simply types in their name, topic to be addressed, and yes or no, do you live in Oceanside? The city attorney has already ruled that this question is completely legal and appropriate. Oceanside's IT department has already spent money on getting this kiosk project off the ground. Please, let's enter the modern era and do what many other cities already do and implement this kiosk check-in system. No waste of paper, no awkward tricks up to the dais. And we will know if people speaking even live in Oceanside and have a legitimate reason to speak. Are city council meetings being overwhelmed by paid-out-of-town flunkeys, as some have alleged? I don't know. But please, do everything possible to make sure that these meetings are completely on the up and up and not being commandeered by out-of-town developers with business before the city who have to pay to have people speak on their behalf. Encourage neighborhood identification. Please finish the kiosk check-in project you started but abandoned when Zack Beck left. Thank you.
Next speaker, Maryori Contreras, to be followed by Cindy Rocco.
Good evening. My name is Marjorie Contreras, and I am the President and CEO of Bilbro Construction, and I am under contract with the City of Oceanside to construct the Tyson Beach Park Restaurant project. My purpose is addressing you today is to request that you will assist us in resolving some of the problems that we have encountered with the project, with the city engineering staff, so that we don't end up in litigations. The project was awarded to Bilbro on January 9, 2019, with a completion date of May 24, 2019, and extremely short construction time. It was presented as a fully designed project at that time. The design of this building was highly customized building to be built from, from combination of block, metals, wood, plastic, specified many items that were from Europe, hard to find. Some of them were in no compliance with the environmental, and they're very difficult to process for delivery on time for this project. The city, instead of recognizing the impossibility to construct in such a short timeframe, has held funding sometimes for months, causing us to work six to seven days per week, financing the project, not to pay our subcontractors in violation of the public law. Reward items needed to be done so many times, and the city has no affect any responsibility for any of the problems that we encountered due to this project being almost impossible to construct to the design. The city has refused to negotiate time extension, giving us more time extension for rainy days. When we complained with rain so many days when working time, they denied their request. We have forced to paint areas that we had already installed, taken it down, and said with a Q-tip, you need to seal a 1/8 of an inch hole because of the, under the direction of the architects. These are just some of the few things that I can mention it. The foregoing, we were forced to work an extremely hostile work environment due to the actions of the members of the staff. We're constantly subject to name-calling, slurs, racial, and derogative statements to me, my employees, and my subcontractors. I will formally put a complaint tomorrow, and I will send it to the city engineer with all the statements. At this point, I have engaged an attorney on this project to the advice of Maturity Company and advice of another subcontractor that I am going through to see issues like this with the city. I ask for assistance in completing this project and solving all the administration issues that we have outstanding so that we can avoid litigations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Here is Cindy Rocco, to be followed by Kelly McCormick, to be followed by Arlene Hammerschmidt.
Hi, my name is Cindy Rocco, and I live in South Oceanside. I'm here as one of the founding members of Represent Oceanside, and our overall goal is to have governance we can trust. And right now, I have two items. One is to request on the September 18 meeting if we could change that important charter workshop on salaries, aides, and term limits to 6:00 instead of 2:00. It's a very important workshop, and just hate to have that and actually invest the time and money into doing that meeting, whereas we should add additional items such as having a commission, contribution limits, ethics commission, ethics board. But anyway, we want to make it more comprehensive, and for those of you who are fiscally responsible, why would we waste our time doing all this without it being all-inclusive? And also making it a higher level of public engagement. I understand on one of our charters way back when, there was like 40 public meetings. So I'm just hoping on that date that we can make it on 6:00, and that we can make this all-inclusive and not waste your time and our time. Thank you.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor? If I can, thank you. We do have on this agenda, under adjournment, that the meeting is, that we are to adjourn to the council workshop on August 14 for the particular workshop that was just described. It says 2:00. Oh, I'm sorry, that's Coast Highway. Okay, that one is actually at 2:00. The one that was just discussed is at 6:00. I think she meant, I think she was talking about the Coast Highway corridor study that is set for August 14 at 2:00. May we, at this meeting, at the appropriate time, discuss moving that to 6:00? I believe the city attorney said yes.
You could discuss it at the time of your adjournment. If you want to change the time to the future meeting, we would have to agendize it under the Brown Act at the time you want.
All right, so we can discuss it, and we can change it and adjourn to 6:00 on August 14?
[inaudible]
Okay. And I do apologize for doing it now, but I wanted to make sure that I addressed Ms. Rocco's issue because she had asked me before, actually on more than one occasion, if we can move it to 6:00 from the 2:00.
Well, the item she spent all the time talking about is already at 6:00.
That one is.
Can we go to the next speaker?
Thank you.
All right. Next speaker is Kelly McCormick, to be followed by Arlene Hammerschmidt.
Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. I'm Kelly McCormick. I'm a public health educator, a former health journalist. I work with youth in Oceanside and other parts of North County, and I'm the parent of two teenagers who are part of a generation bombarded with marijuana commercialization and the false message that marijuana is a harmless drug. Numerous scientific studies reveal that regular use of high potency THC can damage brain development and lead to mental health crises, particularly for youth, including an increased risk for psychotic episodes. an increased risk for psychotic episodes and risk of developing schizophrenia. This is not hyperbole, but statistical fact. That's not the only risk. There's also the health and environmental damage posed by pesticides, fungicides, rodenticides, mold, heavy metals, and other contaminants found in marijuana products. These contaminants are concentrated when marijuana products are concentrated, as they are with dabs, waxes, and vapes. Marijuana users put their health at risk and so do employees who work with these potentially contaminated products. Oceanside is in the process of licensing cultivation and manufacturing businesses, so I ask that you implement a transparent process that gives the public notice before any actions are taken and that provides opportunity for community members to be heard. Specifically, I've heard from community members asking that you publicize all notices of application and that you implement a conditional use permit process that includes public hearings. Neighbors and residents justifiably have concerns about the ways marijuana businesses may affect their quality of life, community character, property values, crime and loitering, traffic, parking problems, air and water quality, and odor, a notorious problem with pot cultivation and manufacturing despite promises of filtration. The city also must have adequate staffing and code enforcement so that complaints can be investigated and remediated quickly. For public and environmental safety, marijuana remnants and byproducts must be considered biohazardous waste and disposed of in a defined manner. And any damaged products should be required to have verification that they have been properly disposed of in a certified location. The pot industry will claim its products are tested, but this is true for only a tiny fraction of marijuana. The vast majority is not tested. There are not enough testing facilities in the state of California and there are none at all in San Diego County. Thank you.
Thank you for your patience. Good evening, Arlene Hammerschmidt, Ivy Road in Fire Mountain. I am speaking tonight to you because I spent the month of July analyzing all four charter attempts of this city. The result is this. Side-by-side comparison of the issues from each one. We're not going to discuss this right now in three minutes, no way. The major points that keep kept coming out to me were two. One, the decline in public-generated material, public-generated interest. And the second was issues that we are continuing to hear today that were addressed in detail in 86 and 90 that are not in the current charter that we have right now. For instance, how to fill council vacancies, term limits, city residency requirements of the city managers, city attorney, police, and fire chiefs. Nepotism is addressed to some extent in our ordinances, but not to the detail that was addressed in 86 and 90. How often to revise the charter or at least revisit it? 10 years. Direction to all staff was only to come from the city manager. Conflicts of interest were addressed. Fair political practices and conflict of interest exceeded what we have now as the California Fair Political Practices Commission. So a little bit by the numbers. Camera, I don't know how to do the camera, so catch up. Thank you. You can see it, I can see it, cool. You can see the decline in public public creation and participation over the years, whether there was a charter commission or not. There was no charter commission in 90 and 2010. The council's participation from direction and approval down to one member in consultation with one lawyer created the charter that we have right now. And what the other part that really jumps out at me is not only the disconnect and the discontent of the public, which shows that our current our current governance is out of balance. The public has been disregarded, denied, disrespected, and we're not quite to the point yet where our this takes time, where our and this takes time.
Please wrap it up.
I'm trying. Where our county superintendents are, this was a comment from the UT editorial staff, right now there's not a hostility from this group toward public input, but there is some leanings toward that. The September 18 workshop, we hope it will be expanded to a commission that makes recommendations to the council regarding charter and ordinances reviews, and I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
At this time, we'll go to item 35 and I'll turn it over to Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you. I'm gonna just go ahead and read the text and then elaborate briefly before hearing my colleagues' comments. City council request by myself and the mayor for staff to implement within 90 days a structured and streamlined planning case review process that establishes a predictable zoning entitlement review path for developers. Actions are to include the following. A, establish a planning case review schedule that clearly illustrates processing timeframes so that the development community has a clear understanding of the timing and process associated with the review of discretionary planning applications. B, provide an opportunity for project applications to meet face-to-face with staff during the initial 30-day application review to provide an opportunity for developers and their teams to meet with staff to discuss preliminary conditions of approval and work through potential issues in a face-to-face meeting. C, empower reviewing staff to make decisions and provide clear direction during developer meetings in order to minimize or eliminate the need for future iterative reviews. D, identify and implement measures to reduce the need for subsequent 30-day review cycles as projects are revised and resubmitted. And finally, identify any fee adjustments needed to ensure full cost recovery of the process described and present any necessary adjustments for city council consideration. So long story short, what we're looking to do is move on a much more efficient and streamlined pathway for the development community so that they can save on cost, they can have improved timelines, and they have a sense of certainty. This will be a win-win for the development community as well as for the city on saving time, saving money, and I'm really excited for staff to consider this and to move forward on it. I think, you know, as a developer or, you know, small or large, as they move in to move on infill development, big or small, they they have a sense of anxiety when it comes to is this going to get approved? Am I going to have roadblocks? And by having a program in a in a system like this, it's going to give them that certainty so that in the end, through that time savings and cost savings, that's going to translate for homes to be more affordable. It's just, it's just practically the way it's going to go. And the city of Oceanside is going to make more money. So it's going to be a win-win and we're going to be more business-friendly and so I'm really excited to move this forward and hear what my colleagues have to say.
Do we have a public sub?
Yes, we do. We have one speaker, Arlene Hammerschmidt.
Good evening, Honorable Council, Arlene Hammerschmidt, Ivy Road in Fire Mountain. So the way this reads, it sounds like it's all for the developers and citizens get nothing. In fact, it could be interpreted as the developers could jump ahead of a homeowner who has an application in because it sounds like it just applies to developers. Now, development, I think in the city of Oceanside is four or more houses. Even the name of development services is a little confusing because I know that also services homeowners. So I recommend a change in language. Replace developer with all planning applicants, if that's how it would work. If it's if it's not how it would work, then leave developers. Also, obviously, this has seems to be generated from the development community because the phrase is the development community in section A. In section B, it'd be nice if some of us homeowners with an application for a project could have a sit-down face-to-face within the first 30 days to see if it's good enough or not, if it's going to fly or not. That'd be nice, but you know, do the developers get this, but the homeowners don't? And again, in section C, during developer meetings, I know developer meetings are a continual, it happens all the time. It's like a normal standard process. I don't know if homeowners get developer meetings. So what's the intent? Words matter. Interpretation, there's planning department is already struggling with trying to make sure that ordinances are interpreted the way they are intended, so let's not leave room for interpretation. Let's honor the homeowners. Honor the residents. We've got a bad reputation in the city already. Too many people feel like it's all about development. It's not about homeowners. It's not about the residents. So let's make it clear and make it a strike for homeowners. Thank you.
There are no more speakers.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you, and and I do believe that this is intended for all applicants for development services. Is that correct? Yes. Okay, so I think we can do that, change the wording so it's applicants for development services. Development services by definition includes planning, building, engineering. So that that would be all applicants. I did get a chance to ask staff what the difference would be because it seems to me that we're pretty much doing all of what is what it basically states. And what I pretty much got out of this is the only real new thing here is this early face-to-face, which is within 30 days, and of course, it would be cost-neutral, so it would it would be at the cost of the applicant. And and actually, one of the things, Ms. Hammerschmidt, that you actually stated is one of my concerns, and that is that whenever you have a pay-to-play, which is this is very akin to pay-to-play, you can actually jump in front of others. I I envisioned this especially for, as you said, homeowners, smaller projects. This is something when the Coastal Commission was looking at this, you know, like paying, there were a lot of developers, especially big developers, who were willing to pay for the cost of having a dedicated, someone dedicated to their project so they can hurry up and get their project approved. And the concern then is that was voiced then by staff and also by some of the commissioners was that this is this indeed is like a pay-to-play where where you could get bumped, even if you applied for sometime, you know, earlier, someone else could bump in front of you because they would then, of course, pay for this. And if they're able to pay for it, because I'm sure that the face-to-face would, you know, depending on how complicated it the project is and the back and also depending on the background of the individual, it will be whatever time it takes for that person to be able to get through and, you know, get this interview done. So I do have that concern about this, you know, the potential for what could happen to pay-to-play, that our residents would then get kind of bumped down on a list. At this point, what I would like to do is to take a neutral position and see what staff comes up with because this is direction to staff. And while there's specifics here, perhaps staff could address my concern about how this is going to impact, say, people who are really concerned about the bottom line for getting projects done, like whatever it be, like ADUs or, you know, they have they got they have a lot, maybe they inherited a lot and they would like to go forward with a project. They're in, you know, it it would be nice to have this face-to-face, but you know, some people just want to try to cut down costs and this may be one of them. Will it impact where they are in line in terms of getting services from development services? So I feel that we're already, we're doing much of this. The big change here would be that face-to-face early on, and those are my concerns. Thank you.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
To help educate a little bit colleagues and the speaker, Ms. Hammerschmidt, so the city of Oceanside has excellent staff and our permitting process and systems, I believe, are probably some of the best in the county. We're not dealing with the standard permitting process. We're dealing with the entitlement pathway, which is a lot more in-depth and requires a lot more cost on the developers' part. For example, if they have to move forward on this study or that study, they can easily spend close to $300,000 before they have an entitlement, and that's a lot of risk. And so what this will allow, these changes A through E, which I worked with staff on and to help formulate a council agenda item that would make sense, this is big changes to what we're doing now. This is not what we're currently doing, council member. And this will help us streamline that process so that there is more staff time available to the public and there's more consistency and certainty. So if you, for example, like Riverside County, if you hand in your plans on XYZ date, which are set, you know you're going to get a response with comments back by XYZ date. And at that time, you could set up a meeting paid for by the individual, whether you're a homeowner or a developer, we could call it whatever you want. Then you could sit in front of that staff with with your team, the city staff you recommend, and everybody can collaborate and so there's not this misconception because what traditionally happens is the comments will come back, they will do their best, the development team to get it back, and then they'll review it for 30 more days. Well, then those conflict with water or fire, and now it's this long, drawn-out-year process when that could have just been resolved with one meeting. And so this is going to substantially improve the development process, saving both our city time and money and the development community time and money, and I think it's a win-win to move forward on for our city.
Is that a motion?
I make a motion to move forward.
Board on item 35.
I'll second that. We have a motion and a second. No other speakers, please vote. Councilmember Sanchez.
Yeah, first of all, I the one thing that I wanted to add here is that we do have a customer satisfaction survey and, you know, input, and this past month, we had very good feedback, so I'm not sure what this is, again, you know, the problem ain't a big problem here. Plus, I have been assured by staff that we've already, we're already doing most of this and that the real change here is that face-to-face. So again, my comments stand about, you know, my concerns about paying to play. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Fowler.
Thank you. We are, could you come forward, Jonathan, please? Is traffic's part of your department as well, right?
Excuse me, I'm sorry, councilman, I didn't hear the question.
Yes, is traffic?
No, traffic is actually, it was at one time under development services, it's now under Public Works.
We have developer conferences right now that's probably the best investment anybody could make preliminarily. I think, I think it's like 250 or something like that, come in and sit down with all the players and understand what you need, which is a pretty good start. My my main question is, do you think this could be implemented in 90 days? Or I I'm not sure if that's the the right word there. Is this going to take some time to put into play?
Sure. Honorable mayor and council members, so yeah, I think 90 days is absolutely feasible for this. It's something that we've had some discussions on already. Essentially, the Essentially, the, the primary difference here is, as was mentioned during the presentations, is right now, we don't have a very structured application process with set deadlines. There are deadlines that are established through what's called the Permit Streamlining Act, so that, you know, there are actually laws in place right now that mandate certain review periods. However, that's not necessarily memorialized in our procedures. Of course, we, we follow them to the extent we can, but this will actually bring much more structure to the process, and I will say that from my perspective, based on the information that I have, it would apply to all project applicants, whether it's a mom-and-pop adding on to their home, or a developer that's building a shopping center.
The, the key, I think, for us is, you know, we've heard of a hundred occasions where, I don't know if the analogy lead a horse to water, but you can't make him drink, of what they need to do to, to go through this process. I just think that's the important thing that we need to help them understand as we go through this process.
Yes, and actually, on that point, staff actually is currently working on updating our application materials and our applications, so to clarify, to further clarify exactly what needs to be submitted with an application, that's a very important step in the process. I would agree to have clarity in terms of what needs to be submitted upfront to prevent any miscommunication that could delay a project.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second, please vote.
Motion approved, four-zero-one abstain from Councilmember Sanchez.
At this time, we'll take a short break and come back at six o'clock for our public hearing item.